Bird.
Eric.
McGinn.
Here.
Steins.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Hill Piper.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Number two approval agenda, any changes here, honor?
Uh, no changes this evening. Go to approve, call them all.
McGinn.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hill Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yeah.
Okay, number three presentation, petitions, no communications. A, sergeant opinion, sir, roll over Joe Slight, I'll turn it over to Chief Eagle.
Thank you, your honor. So recently we had Hopsir leave the department and which created a vacancy for a shift supervisor or sergeant in our department. Uh, we had a very credit process, please run into the last, but was very good officers. Um, and it was a very difficult decision, but uh, Joe Slight goes to the top and he moved sergeant. Joe's moved the department for seven years, um, he's been at K O M O's recently, uh, doing a great job, so we're gonna have him, have it back to them.
Be either.
Perfect. So similar last case, is there any connection? One, two, three.
Chapter four, report of change, any policy administration, P D.
No report.
Our public safety transportation committee, Steve. No report, but. Okay, utility committee, Stephen. Water for the theater. Thank you, sir, so we discussed the utility last week, uh, situation for Seaport. Due to the drought, needs some water, uh, we certainly check our water treatment facility to make sure the public that we gave this water. As the drought, there's no issues, you deserve the right to cut it off at any time. Jim drew up the agreement, they signed it, uh, resolution to the package as well, the agreement. Evidently, there was some question about, uh, how we're charging them to the agreement, number three, uh, they're being charged with the normal rate, it's football rate. For the water. So it's totally charged anybody else, it's five dollars for the excess, we're going to eat. Public Works is in charge of that, we're in on sure that they're charged, while the, the appropriate rate for the amount of water that they need. Uh, so this is in the consent agenda, but I'll answer, please, so I'll answer your question, otherwise that's all I have.
I have a question, um, have we previously done a similar contact?
We'll see your point, I'm not sure we have.
Right, I don't know.
I don't think it's been as bad with the.
No, we see the problem we've done with that.
Okay, but this is the first time they have any.
And that's what we have in our long, there's one.
And as we can. Jay, are they needed, so we've got that safe word.
Yes. One of the things that came up in the committee meeting was that we are only responsible up to.
Correct.
It's pretty important that it starts that.
Hey, number one, welcome to committee, Eric. Um, we met last Friday on the fifth, um, and met eight, twelve keyer to discuss the heated brand, uh, review the project and, uh, accepted their, their, oh, um, it made that the maximum requirement of thirty thousand dollars that, that brand approved. Was part of the contingency prop plan for the, uh, cat grant as well, so we had to be put pressure. And that's the consent agenda. Uh, yeah, it's gonna be a great project that building is, is best for me.
What's the deadline on that?
Uh, gosh, I might talk to him when we walk through, it'll probably be at least a year to get it done, um, the inside is chalk.
To me?
Yeah, it's handy, and they're gonna put four apartments in there, so it'll be four pretty nice apartments, and then two retail spaces.
It's starting fairly soon?
Yes, yes, yeah, I would imagine, uh, you know, for the cat grant and stuff. They're, that'll all be run through the city, the cat grant and the.
Just, important note is that this is a reimbursement grant. That's all I have here. All right, thank you. Uh, number five, department reports, voting official, Ed. No report. Uh, finance officer, Ed.
No report.
City attorney, Jim.
No report.
Uh, director of public works, Layla. Keep it short here, just, uh, smoke testing start tomorrow. Tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, let's say we'll start on Story Street, use the traffic control on Stories lightly, and that should be completed by Thursday. Uh, we do have twenty-six houses on Boyle advisory due to the water main tie-in at the South Main Street Water Main Diamond Project. All precautionary reasons for the advisory, the tie-in was done today, I took samples, about three, forty-five a day, I will take another set morning, when that passes, I'll open the loop up, I'm with you. As usual, I guess.
Thank you. Uh, nothing on engineering, uh, public safety, chief Adams, uh, what is this, state, uh, chief eagle?
Your report, your honor.
Okay, uh, city administrator, Bill.
Thank you, sir, I have one, uh, report on the agenda, and I have several updates, uh, for you all, we'll start with what's on the agenda. So here tonight is to discuss technology for city hall, uh, we've talked about it before, remember in pass, and then something's come up, we've had to use the money for example for the new rope and everything. So we have, um, budget of seventy-five thousand dollars out of, we'll collapse the sales tax for models, city hall, as well, you're familiar with the backfill that we get from the state every year, we put that in repairs under city hall to continue the remodel, I will tell you that some subpointing issues have been come up from the outside, particularly on the chimney back here that needs to be done, so we'll get in the ditch for that, that's gonna take some of that sixty-two thousand. It's like the same old pattern every year, and give money to remodel the inside and things on the outside happen, and then we have to fix it anyway, so that's another example. Uh, but we're, what we're looking at is a system for the council chambers here, uh, so this is in there, uh, it involves, um, like pucks, so like a hockey puck for micro, or microphones, with speakers that we would mount up there, and come with a camera as well.
It's uh, the next tab, nope, put it back up.
Yeah, I think it just went away.
Yeah.
But anyway, uh, it involves these pucks that, that there'll be one in between, and you have these microphones, uh, and then a camera as well, the approximate cost is about four thousand dollars, um, which seems fair. It's the same system the school uses for the school board meetings, they like it, uh, Andre talked to some members at the school, and it seems to work fine, so we've got something here, and we'll continue to move forward on that, at least for some of that. Uh, and I've seen some shaking heads, so I think we'll move forward, uh, this budget is still staff to make decisions, and so moving it set up at the appropriate time. Um, and then, do you have any ideas on the remainder of that seventy-five thousand, what you want staff to use that money for? We do have, we made some improvements in the, in the auditorium, it's a bit cumbersome, but with the speakers where everybody can hear and everything, we're not in there that often, um, so we can maintain that, so if there are other things that you want this, uh, rest of this money to go toward for the model city hall, uh, I'm looking for ideas, I don't need, uh, the answer tonight, but if you could possibly think about it over the next few weeks, our next council meeting is on September sixth, and maybe you can bring some of your ideas to staff.
You have a couple ideas or things that are possibilities that we should consider?
Well, I know we've talked about, um, these desks, they, uh, I came here maybe for, and these desks were here. Um, so, we're gonna, yeah, yeah, so if you wanted to replace those.
One thing, Mike, like Terry just mentioned, is there a way to maximize seating out there more than it is currently?
Um, up here?
Yeah, place of benches with something else to.
Well, you certainly could take those benches up and, uh, put chairs. What, you know, or you could look at a total re, total redo of this chamber, so I might go with a show, or re-modernize it there. That would probably take, you know, some consultations, obviously, with the company or something like that, um, that has been talked about before, only, uh, it didn't move forward, so those are the things staff's looking for from the electric officials on how you want us to see.
Is that new audio system, will that enhance the screening?
The screening?
You mean?
Like the video or the, the sound?
Or whether you have to connect, can those cameras and stuff be tied into Zoom so that?
So the cam, it's only one camera, and it would, um, be directly tied into this computer, so all the mics, so the sound is a lot better. Yeah, so that would be another question, is where would you like that camera placed, so that, does it, do you want it directed on you guys, or do you want it directed back here?
So that people are seeing, I mean, everybody knows you all, um, but if you want to, people that are on Zoom, if you want them to be able to see who's speaking, uh, who's announcing, you can put it on the audience.
It will move back and forth, right? Now. When somebody speaks. Now we'll have to mount it to the wall.
We're right here, right above the back of Mayor's, uh, chair. Should at least the person that was on the, on mic.
Well, that mic won't be used anymore.
Okay, okay, it's so catch, like, hand it down from whoever's.
So they say the mics will pick up by feet, so the thought process is that each, between each one of you guys, there'll probably be a puck that's about the size and looks kind of like a Amazon, uh, Excel Alexa, yep. Um, and they're, they believe that that would be enough to pick up this, yep. If not, we could always add one here.
So if you give that some thought, uh, we can certainly talk about it in the next council meeting, on, I'm getting from you all that, something, like, anything additional, where do you like that money focused inside city hall, whether it's in these chambers here or the auditorium, the one, just sort of, and put on the light officials. Just a few updates, uh, talking with the school, uh, the bids are due for the new school, school road on, on September twenty-ninth. We're holding that those bids, and within the, I think, so, between the city schools, three point five million, we're certainly open to taking that under budget, so we're due then. Reminder that council meeting changed in September sixth as the Labor Day. A reminder that myself and Councilman Mormon will be, um, on that, if they approve, the council will back, uh, the E C C H in, that interested in trip, so we'll be on Wednesday, Friday. Uh, question on the website, we get a lot of requests, uh, for nonprofits to advertise their business, one example is like the nonprofit troops, individuals, or additions and things like that. You don't really have anything on the website at the present time, uh, it could open the door to a ton of others, uh, I think we have a free end of page on the website, you do have an informational page on, on there. What that's, what was that under?
Um, Y Boon.
Okay. So you can find that. So the question, is that something that we want to open to allow that, we haven't.
Why wouldn't we do that?
Sorry.
Why wouldn't we do that?
Well, I, we had requests, yeah, we have requests for.
For nonprofits. And we.
Or that performs services, and now what I did use like an efficiency service. And people want public information, it's just those guys pointing out on the side. You mean it? Well, this, no, that's, and that's, the city runs it now, will do the library and, and, yeah, you know.
Well, I'm wondering, is it we would have to pick and choose, I mean, if there would be any kind of decision making that we need to decide, just wondering. So what we do now for those kinds of things like the sign, the electronic sign, is they have to show us a five oh one C three, that way we are making those decisions, and it's something that, okay, this is, you have a five oh one C three, no questions asked, asked, we'll put it on there.
I'm answering, sir, this is a lot, you know, all of the that are relevant, yes, regarding problems. I don't want to, the website, too, there's already a lot of information on there about, about city. And now the human services thing, like directing folks to the hospital's resources. Having a static thing there.
I think we do have something like that.
That, and I think that might even take care of what the primary function of, of the addiction.
At least we used to, the hospital created a link of like a flyer or something, and I remember posting that.
Okay, so, yeah. Another question that came up on the website, we don't list for like people that are on committees, uh, we list their committees on the website, but we don't list the names of the people that are on the committees. Like P and T or civil service or something like that, we normally don't list their names, uh, actually a little done on pay decisions, they don't be very, uh, strictly if needed, civil service means when needed, a lot of them are. So the question is, we have not, we don't intend to, unless you want to change it, to add those names, just this, the committees. Do you have any input on that, or would you like to?
It's all the information, isn't it, that when they're coming in, we, we do that, they're probably waiting, so people have access to that.
We do have a discussion about how people know when things are open, and you have just the name, and when the term expires, then if somebody's looking, hey, I just moved to town, I'm interested in this. But the, the library keeps, the library, we're on their website, or you have their, like, expiration dates on theirs, if we did something similar for ours, you know.
I, I agree with that, that I think it's, it would be helpful if we had an opening online that had certain committee that we would put that out, or that information that would be put or when, you know, appoint, we'd open, I guess, we'll.
Is there a reason to add?
We just generally, all of this is just on the path, that we just put the committee, but not. And, you know, when we point, and we don't tell them, hey, the names are on the works. Obviously, it's opposite of public, because it's on the agenda when they're appointed, example tonight, people have been here four months, there are several appointments on. So if you should have that, that in Stevens.
If that's, uh, if you get it that way, is that something that staff, can you go on the website?
Yeah, so it'd be.
Console, someone else.
No, no, so it just us remembering to do that.
That problem is sometimes will change. We have a term, we have to, all that, we should, uh, right, so you just said more than, you know, we don't have that designated employee, otherwise, so it just adds, if you wonder, if you wonder how. Go up on the table, you know, we've talked about, we had, we had talked about, maybe somebody that do that, and I'm working on that, just, maybe let's talk about that, let's decide that, okay, and I think we have something on that here in the next couple months. A, a possible solution for you. Okay. It might be something you want to ask. Okay, so my last item then is to bring up, talking about, uh, what, when we have a point for opening it on the board at the library, we just don't do tonight on this council. Uh, but I've been talking with some people with fever's out there to get on my note, Councilperson Lemsen brought it up, and it's not about bringing more attention to it. What I am getting at, just through your information, I guess, like, some kind of comment, this is, there's people that are willing to serve, would like to, but they're reluctant and do not choose to because, quite frankly, of social media. That's the reasons we've been given, uh, because they don't want to be stuck in social media.
It can be criticized?
Because.
Maybe they will make a decision that.
I don't think, I don't think it's necessarily, it's specifically a decision in there, but they're subject to, really, whatever you want to call it, because they are serving as a public. So those, I, this is more me letting you know, this is what we're finding out, because of, of, uh, you know, we're having, uh, giving people to do this anyway. Uh, and I think we got three positions, if I understand, and, we just go through, not as a, but, but I'm, it's more me letting you know, and staff is working on that, but these are role classes coming up, but the reasons weren't given from them, not, not serving.
I don't see anything of the library. Okay, so you said we, we filled two, well, we're filling two P and T.
Yes.
Okay, but we have three open, a library, and then we're done, so.
Yeah, yes, okay. Couple working on, and we'll, again, we're running into some role arms.
And, uh, so when do you want, if somebody's interested in serving on that, when do you want their, send an email with all the information that they're interested in, and then, uh, the process that I can solve with the mayor?
There is an application online.
The ultimate nominees that comes to council. Other than that, any questions, or any ideas, if not, I think my.
Right, number six, consent agenda, there are items on the consent agenda that you want removed, and you said separately, and not, spoken through, call them all.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hill Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yeah.
Bird?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, orders, A, third reading orders, twenty-two eighty, provided the general property tax, please, and collected each year on all property located within the north, blue and house, urban real area, be paid to a special fund for payment, principal and interest on loans, banks, and this including bonds issued incurred by the city in connection with, or building housing, urban or rural. So.
Second, call them all.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hill Piper?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Call them all.
Hill Piper?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
A, B, first reading orders, twenty-two eighty-one, recommend the planning zone convention, orders, chapter twenty-three, section twenty-three point zero-one, consists of seven member board, nine residents in the city, appointed by the mayor, seventy-two approval by the council. Sorry, call them all.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hill Piper?
Yes.
A, C, first reading orders, twenty-two eighty-two, add stop sign regulations on Hancock Drive and South Jackson, chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero-two. So. Call them all.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hill Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Hey, uh, number eight, I will comment, it's Stephen, number nine, council member comments, and there's a, yeah, one order from. You remember at the last meeting, I proposed that, um, going to the park department to see if they would be willing to split the cost of having two portable restrooms out of the study hill this winter. I went Monday night, they managed to agree to pay half for both, having two out there, which totals five hundred dollars of their share, five hundred dollars our share, so I would hope that this council would see fit to doing that, providing that service after, so, and I think I need motion, right?
Sorry, call them all.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hill Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Here, the other council, uh, comments, it's Stephen.
I have a couple things.
Yes.
Um, wanna check, and, and, uh, Terry, you've been involved in the green space there, um, and I just have a couple questions, is that, and I'm not clear, I know it's owned by the city, but is it managed by the city, or is it managed by the park department?
Managed by the C V B.
Okay, so I know we had this a little bit, and I just wanna, um, put this out of thought, the time cycle, you know, sometimes I've gone by, and it would be nice, and I think I mentioned this too, it'd be nice if we had some sort of tables with shade that the people that sit there, maybe have their lunch, um, people that work downtown, and it just, there's not really protection of the sun right now, and I thought it would be nice if we could have a couple of, what, little permanent, I guess they're permanent, uh, tables with, uh, the sun protection over, that people could go and sit there, so, um, just something to think about, I think we would get more use out of that space at times when, especially during the daytime, and, so I don't know if if there's money left over in the budget, I, I kind of did some checking on, um, Ames has some of those, and they're tables with the, the little shade over it, and I did some checking, and they looked, in my mind, quite pricey, uh, but there's probably other options out there, and, and what I looked at, I don't know if you had a chance to look any up?
Yeah, I had this discussion with, uh, the Arts Council, and Mendo, about, actually tables up there, so that we can use it, or, right, we utilize that space, um, C V B doesn't have it in their budget right now, um, to do that, we have talked about doing some fundraising, and putting agents up there, um, Chris donated a table, I donated a table, a plastic picnic table. We can put holes in those and put umbrellas in there, but the problem with that is, on a windy day, who's gonna take care of that problem, and we talked about putting four or five picnic tables up there, but again, those lightweight ones, will they carry it off, right, and if we anchor them down, then it becomes a mowing issue.
Yeah, and I think that's why these, the ones that I look at are more expensive, because they are settled, set in concrete, I mean, they have the posts, and they don't have the umbrella, so it's permanent, I mean, it's all right there and stays there. Um, just something to think about, and I don't know whether there'd be.
And I agree with.
Group that would, you know, be.
How do we mow around that, how, I mean, that's kind of how it works, but.
Is, is there a way to fix, um, something to hold, uh, an umbrella or something of that type in the back of the metal benches? Cause that's already, cause that's already there.
That we could talk to.
And then it's just a matter of moving the umbrella.
We could talk to Stephen.
Or whatever. Or whatever covering that's there, and then you don't have additional moving back and forth and stuff.
Yeah, I can ask that. Stephen, you know, comes, I mean, maybe those tactics and things. Sits on the nights on the drink, maybe, so I can ask him about that, there's certainly been modified.
Well, just, just a couple ideas. Like, like you said, when I go by and the sun's directly, it, it looks like it's too hot to sit there and, and have your lunch. It'd be nice if we could use it a little bit more.
If that's gonna have to be a, a, a city budget item, something, I, like I said, it's not in C V Ds.
Okay, so just putting it that out. Um, second thing is, as. I wasn't here last meeting, that as you know, the, our Main Street application was not approved for this year, and. We do meet with some of the DuPont representatives tomorrow, and they are kind of, I think, going to walk through maybe some of. Their thoughts on our application, and definitely we will be looking at pursuing that again next year, um, twenty-four. That's true, it is every two years, so we'll be looking at, and, and we will, it was a very quick process for us. Um, to pull that together in a month or two months and, and, so we definitely will have a lot more time to do that. Um, but just, we're just still in the works, I think. Um, the other thing is, I wanted to just check back on, because we. Were not approved this year for Main Street, um, if there is any interest or if we're still talking about working on those squares where the. Uh, wood chips are right now, that people have kind of complained about. And if, I know when we were talking about Main Street, that would be an ideal place to start and, and either bring in some brick patterns there or some kind of. Colored concrete, doing something with those areas. I don't know if that's, uh, possible to go ahead with that, I don't know, budget-wise. But in one way, it would look like the community is, is really dedicated towards working on improving the downtown, and I think that would help when we do our next application. So it's something to think about, and whether anything's going to be done with those areas this year, um, and I know you had mentioned some of the sidewalks we. We worked on also, so I think that's, that's just one other thing to think about.
I think that's something to bring up, it's budgeting and this on the. Maybe plan.
Because really, rather than waiting two years, I don't think we, we need to do that. My last thing is, did we do any, have we said anything or, or this about having a work session? Uh, I still think that would be a good idea before we, we'll, that. Trying, uh, working on a new bonus community center project, kind of. Doing some brainstorming on that.
We discussed it, uh, before, we talked about, once we get to London, we'll start talking about the tape. Once we get there, vacation schedule.
Sounds good.
I have on my list to deal with.
That's it.
Good. Any other council comments, it's Steve. Any public comments for items not on the agenda?